Good evening and welcome to the August 15th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. All set. Okay, start with a roll call, please, starting on my right.
Andy Knapp.
Joyce Capiello.
Donna Masucci.
Bob Tessier.
John Driscoll.
And Donna Masucci will be a full voting member tonight to an absence. Next item is to review and approve the minutes from August 1st, 2023. I did that.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second them.
Roll call.
Capi.
Capiello.
Masucci.
Tessier.
Driscoll.
Updates from the town planner.
Just a quick updates for the board. At our work session meeting in September, we'll continue on with our zoning amendments, as well as go over the CIP. And then the CIP, we were recommended to go to the Select Board. As you all know, but I was just for people in the audience that may not know, we're updating our housing chapter of the master plan. And I have put on the agenda, which is here in the room, as well as online, a link to the survey and also to a community meeting, which is the Housing Forum, which will be on September 30th, 8:30 to 12 at the ECLC. And I think that's all I have right now.
Okay. Item number five, a Class 6 private road application, map 234, lot 6, Joseph Sweeney and Devon Beckwith. Come forward, please.
Mr. Chairman and the board, I just wanted to address that Mr. Sweeney is back here due to the Select Board asking him to return to us. So if you see on the memo that they want, he was originally going to request for waivers, but he is here tonight to discuss that he is meeting the recommendations and performing road improvements on the route.
I understand you talked to members of the town staff about the road. And I guess the last note we have is from concerning your agreement to clear all the debris, dig down approximately 12 inches solid existing gravel, put in two-foot shoulders on each side, and the gravel service of a 16-foot roadway with two feet, two-foot shoulders. And regrade approach to Route 9 to provide for more gentle approach to Route 9. Repairing existing head walls and approve to meet the 20-foot road standard.
The work has been, say, 95%. My contractor was half on today. I haven't had enough.
Why didn't turn off?
So essentially, the work is complete and/or will be within a few days.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments on this, questions?
Does he want to move in before the road improvements are completed? Is that the only case? It says here. Want to move in before the rotor improvements were complete?
Yes, when I went before the Select Board, I asked for that. Almost immediately after that meeting, I met with my contractor and with Mark Moreau on the road. The road has a 60-foot right-of-way and originally was built with a 20-foot width, but over the past 50 years that it's been there, the shoulders have degraded and there was quite a bit of debris in that. And Mark and my contractor agreed that we could work within that 20-foot, 20-foot width inside the 60-foot right-of-way without having to deal with the state. Contractor expanded the road at two feet on either side.
Still was a question that some had about the proposed apron budding the Route 9?
Yes, well, I was, the apron was going to be a compromise in a previous presentation I made, but we brought the road up to code. And I don't see that the apron is needed. The Section 4 requirements, F, Category 3, I, describes expanding a road to that minimum to meet the code. And I believe I've done that. And that the apron would not be needed. The apron falls mostly within the right-of-way of Route 9. And I don't believe there's a private road in Barrington that has an apron.
Any comment on that?
It's not a road standard, is it? Apron is part of a road standard, is it?
What he's referencing, I believe, is in the Class 6 private road policy. Is that what's your question? I'm sorry.
Don't our witnesses require an apron?
State road, though.
So it's all about true because it's a state.
Yeah, and you have to go to DOT, District 6, and go through that whole thing, too.
That was from Mark. Yeah, but can't be a waiver? Road standards require an apron. Not going to do an apron if there's good reason for it.
But it's an existing road.
As I understand, the apron was a suggestion by the fire chief, but it's not, it's not described anywhere in the road use policy or the road improvement policy.
The witnesses, no. I mean, I shouldn't have been a waiver. Creating up the standards, the standards require an apron.
Did he meet the 10%, did he meet the 10% value for the work?
What's the total value of the work?
I haven't received the invoice on that. That's going to be lumped into the grading of the property.
So I have asked for that, but he hadn't been able to give me the cost estimate.
It will probably be less than the 10%, but as I read that, it says to improve the road to these standards or make a 10% contribution toward it. And I've improved the road to those standards.
You're going 50 feet beyond your property line instead of what you're doing.
At my driveway, a driveway, from my driveway down the road, it's always been at least 20 feet wide.
Yep.
Okay. But the grading that will be done will go 50 feet beyond my driveway.
Right.
If anybody's ever driven down that road in the springtime, I mean, putting in a bunch of gravel and work, that is a significant improvement because that road turns into a bit of a soup hole. So.
Beautiful road today.
I saw the dump truck loads of material going in, so I know there was, there was some work that went into it.
Any more comments? So.
You were trying to find the article, reference the apron. On article 12.5.
In zoning? Site plan?
No, I'm sorry, subdivision regulations. Is that what you were looking for?
I know we have a requirement for it at some point.
Because that's where.
What page?
What number is that again?
54 of the subdivision regulations, but that's also, he doesn't fall under that because you can't regulate on the single-family. So that's where it's going to get to if he's not subdivision.
Right.
Multi-family unit. As far as like site review, but I don't know where, you're talking about those zoning warrants.
Well, to me, it's not a question of whether we grant the variance or not, it's just a question of who we should be asking for.
Know that the fire chief and Mark had asked that or like suggested that. Neutral on this.
So if you look at 12.2 Parents 1, Road Design Standards, Public and Private Roads, so you have private roads right above it, all streets and property held under private ownership or not maintained by the town. Then right below that is the Road Design Standards, Public and Private Roadways, private roadways being the key piece here. The town of Barrington shall be designed according to the requirements of Table 1 and Figures 4A, 4B, and 4C, Road Design Standards and Guidelines. Minimum pavement width for access roads is 20 feet. The width may be reduced to 18 feet for dead-end roads with, with an ADT below 100 that do not have more, that do not have any truck traffic when curbing is required on rural roads such as intersections or steeper grades. Then the pavement width shall be increased to two feet. Roads in areas owned commercial or village district shall be based on accepted methods of design, number of lanes in need for bike lanes, non-traffic parking, or other special conditions or needs. I do not see anything in that that specifically specifies a road apron is a must. And it's not in Table 1. It talks about pavement width, but it doesn't talk about dirt roads transitioning with an apron. Okay, so your task is to send a note, a letter to the Select Board.
The recommendation from the planning board is.
To approve this?
To approve.
And did you want to mention, I don't think there's any point mentioning the apron.
I don't either.
The regulations.
I don't think so. The only other question I have is, the policy says that it should be finished for the COs issued.
And John had talked about that.
I'm sorry, say again.
The policy says the, the road approved says be finished for the COs issued. So that been discussed and approved?
No, because they have, he's coming back, since it's kind of involved, they haven't made their decision yet. If he's asking for a waiver for his certificate of occupancy, is that what you're saying?
But the work's.
But you don't need that anymore.
Right.
So he didn't need that anymore, but they haven't gone through that process that, once he goes to the Select Board, it'll.
He'll come up next week?
Yes, on the 11th.
It's on the thing, the summary here.
Oh.
I see.
It says, once we move in before we, before I move in, that's on the summary. If that's not the case, we'll put a public hearing on this.
If anybody has any comments.
That's why I thought we were going to be impacting wetlands and required a.
Oh, for the first, for the first part, so the, yeah, the first part is when he originally, initially went to the Select Board, that's what he was intending.
As long as the case.
Yeah, and then no longer the case since then, he's meeting the road standards.
The only thing I do see is it specify, sorry to jump back to that, but a reference to the driveway standards, but I don't think the driveway standards specify that it has to have a. Section, yeah, it doesn't specify that it has to have a.
Somewhere it's in there, though, because remember the Southeast Land Trust guy was annoyed with us because we were making him do it?
You're, I apologize, you're right. 12.3.2 Parents 6, unpaved driveways will require paved aprons with a minimum distance of 16 feet from the edge of roadway pavement. Paved portion shall be constructed to prevent all drainage from entering into the travelway.
That's in driveways, but not roadways.
Right, but if you look at the private road standard, you have to follow the bouncing ball and it references from 12.3 over to 12.2 Parents 5, private roads, rotor street, and then you, it references into 12.2.1, which are the road standards, which then references over to driveway and access standards because you're, it's a driveway of four or more, essentially on a private road. And that's where, because if you follow the driveways with four or more, it references to the design standards for that, which then is how you get to the driveway access standard for the reference for it all.
Yeah, I know, I know we require it because I remember the Southeast Land Trust, that guy was doing that on, up on the state highway. Made him do it, remember he was all.
Right, but the gentleman here is the single-family home, so that's where the difference is, too. It's not like a site plan or that.
He used to work parking lot.
So wouldn't that be a site plan?
Stonehouse Pond, is that what you're referring to? Up by Stonehouse, was that the one?
Yeah, we, he was on Route 9, we had, we had him paved and he was there, Southeast Land Trust. We're impressed with him.
Okay, so. Do you open this to public comments? We're going to open it to public comments on this case, in case anyone has anything to add.
If any online is here or against this application, please raise your hand. Mr. Chairman, I don't see online.
Okay, closing public comment. Are we waiving the paving piece? Is it relevant? Yes, because under 12.4.1, it specifically says paving may be waived by the planning board for private roads with low traffic volumes and moderate grades. So I would make the recommendation that we waive it.
Are you looking at the subdivision or site review regulations? Because once again, he doesn't fall either under one of those, even though I understand where you're coming from.
It's under private roads of 12.4, which is why I referenced 12.4.1, and it specifically says it can be waived there. So to make sure we have formally done it, I would. Wave. Environment for paving the apron.
We entertain a motion to waive.
Or entertain a motion. I am proposing.
I agree.
A, a waiver from four, from 12.4.1, that, for the, for paving of an apron, Kelly Lane.
Does it be a hardship if it, if it's a financial hardship and.
It would probably.
Certain intent of the regulations.
Propel him past the, yes, that too, and it would probably propel him past his 10%.
Second.
Roll call.
Capi.
Capiello.
Masucci.
Tessier.
Haller.
Driscoll.
Just for clarification, accurate, so it's to. Paving. Okay.
All right. All set? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
It's like board meeting, it'll be on that.
Number 6A, continued case from August 1st. Lot number 240-8-NR-23, dash sub, parentheses, 23 Young Road LLC. Pressed by the applicant to continue the case to the October 3rd meeting. Hi, Chris.
Mr. Chair, for record, Christopher Barry, Land Surveying and Engineering.
I'm sorry, I mean, Rick, are you green?
But no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Christopher Barry with Barry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant and the new landowner here this evening. We are asking for a continuance to the October meeting. We have asked in our continuance letter if the board would allow the plans, traffic analysis, stormwater analysis, go to CMA engineers between now and the next meeting. Our hope is that we can get a scope of work from them and a cost estimate from them to review that work and potentially get that work starting in the review process. Those were studies that the planning board had asked us for, which we'll be submitting shortly, and we'd like them sent off to CMA.
Hey, any comments? Let's divide this two paragraphs. The first one is to grant a continuance. Is there a motion to grant a continuance? You want that first before the, okay. Let's go to the second paragraph. Further ask the board to vote to submit the plan set for engineering review items, traffic analysis, drainage analysis, to CMA engineers for a cost estimate, and allow the start of the review once received by the planning office. Motion to accept that? Oh, yeah. Additionally, besides that review, we also have CMA review the application to see if it complies with the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, we generally object to that and have from.
Yeah, a lot of towns do that now, as you probably, I think, nodding hands.
That is why we continue to object to it.
It's a tough question about the yield plans, though.
Yeah, the yield plan was voted on by the. Yeah, we already voted on that.
Yes.
Sir.
Lucky for you. Lucky for you.
Pat, that's history.
Damn. They had all kinds of stuff prepared.
Okay, how is the board going to vote on this? Do they want to add the, that it complies with the subdivision regulations as part of the review by CMA? CMA did, or completely went through our subdivision regulations in the August 1st edition, represents what they have done.
But also.
To clean it up and so forth.
Mr. Chairman, since his application did come in before.
Predates.
I forgot to tell you, predates the new.
Mentioning that because CMA is involved in this.
In compliance with subdivision, but I mean, the environmental review, we haven't received that yet, right? It's part of the compliance.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so the outstanding studies are traffic drainage, revised plan set, the environmental review, which has been conducted, and the aquifer review in Article 7.
Hydrological.
The hydrologic study, right. We've asked that those to not be sent to CMA currently. If the board feels as though, after receiving them and after digesting that information, they need to go to CMA and CMA is qualified to review those things, then they would be sent off of them.
So we're looking, we're looking at CMA to review some parts of the compliance, not all of parts of the compliance.
Yeah, that's what he's suggesting. Why would we submit it for review if we don't have it all complete? Well, he's actually, I guess what he's looking for is a cost estimate, right?
Mostly.
Yeah.
It seems to be the.
Sending the analysis in for a cost estimate, allowing to start at the review, so I guess I'll let you speak to that.
It, it seems to be not the cause of the delay, but there's a delay in getting a review proposal back from, and it's not just CMA, it's all review consultants. And then the, then they have to get the work in their queue and then the work has to be conducted. And so all we're asking is that they receive the package, they see how thick it is, and they say this will cost X number of dollars to review, so that we can prepare for that and progress that along.
But if pieces, they haven't seen certain pieces of it yet, that you won't get a full cost estimate, is that something?
We understand that, but I intend to discuss with the board their scope and purview within the subdivision regulations, and we want to reserve our right to do that. Sound reasonable?
Your motion? Planning Department, have any comments?
Not this time, but just for clarity, we have not received the new submittedals yet.
Okay.
But it does take, like Mr. Barry talked about, it takes him two to three weeks to get a proposal drafted, so.
Make a proposal that we. That the traffic analysis and the drainage analysis can be submitted to CMA for a cost estimate, one available.
I'll second that.
Before we vote, why don't we open, see if anybody has any comments in the public and online? Yeah, just pertaining to the studies, has nothing to do with the project.
Yes, something to do with the project, yes.
We're not discussing the project.
What are you discussing?
This motion.
This motion, which is to further ask the board to submit a plan set, a plan set for engineering review and traffic analysis and drainage analysis to CMA for a cost estimate. He's looking for a cost estimate.
Oh, okay, all right. I can hardly hear you and I'm only in the third row. I'm either deaf or the microphones are really dull.
I'll turn them up.
Thank you. Even this, even this one here.
Okay. No more comments, a closed public hearing on this, we'll proceed with the vote.
My motion's been seconded.
Oh, yeah.
Capi.
Capiello.
Masucci.
Tessier.
Haller.
Driscoll.
Thank you. Okay. As far as I'm concerned, it does.
I just said traffic analysis, drainage analysis.
I guess we can add that with the hydrologic. Okay.
The continuance is still in order.
All right. It's a motion to continue this application until the October 3rd meeting. Second. Planning Board. I'm making a motion.
Driscoll.
Capi.
Roll call.
Capiello.
Tessier.
Haller. Driscoll.
Thank you. New applications, item, section B, B1. Lot 234-56-GR-23, two lots, owner Todd P. Dudley. Pressed by the applicant for a major, a minor subdivision application for a two-lot subdivision with waivers on map 234, lot 56, located on Oak Hill Road in the general residential zoning district, lot 56, currently 51.72 acres, and the proposed subdivision would make the lot 56. 12.02, 09 acres in lot 56, one would be 39.63 acres. Hello?
Sorry to interrupt you, get too far. See if that, if there's a green light. That in the middle, red or green?
Green.
Okay, now we're good, thank you. I think it put it kind of wherever.
Okay. So I'm here to represent Todd here with the subdivision. Why don't we start off with Todd, he's going to tell you the reason why we're doing the subdivision to begin with.
Okay, folks, the primary reason why we're doing the subdivision satisfied the estate of my lady. She had, I, I own 50% of the property and she owned the other 50%. Settle that, my siblings and I. Subdivision where I, I retain the farm in a certain parcel, the other parcel. There are no current plans for development on. That's the primary reason why we're here.
That's one of the reasons why I'm asking for some waivers, too. Done wetland delineation, but we didn't do entire proposed lot 56-1. Showed an area along the wetlands in this, this area here, well exceeds the two acres that would be required by the town. So it's more than just to show that it's a buildable area. Did test pits in that area as well. As Todd said, he lives in, lives in the farmhouse over here. We've done, made the lot minimum of 200 feet of frontage. Made the lot 12 acres so that he can have two acres and use it for his current use. He's got an existing septic system and well. We're asking not to do, one of the waivers is going to be to not do test pits on his lot, since he has a fairly current septic design and it's been installed and approved by the state. Did do test pits on the proposed lot 56-1. Yes, if it's any questions? No questions, we can proceed to accept the application. No questions, we can proceed to accept the application. Motion to accept the application is complete.
I second it.
Rule call, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Sutchi, aye.
Tessa, aye.
Alan, aye.
Driscoll, aye. Okay, more questions? The applicant, there were comments from the zoning, police, fire chief, road agent, and conservation had no comments. Assessing just made some comments about, I guess, basically concerns is the sheds and everything may be more than the two acres out of current use. This would create an entire parcel to be out of current use, is there any concern about that? No, and also in her comments is shouldn't, this shouldn't be part of the, hold the subdivision up. Right. But we've already done a sketch and he's already. Okay. He's already working with her right now. Any comments before I open it to public comments?
Only, I do have a, for full disclosure, just so everyone knows, I work with Todd.
So.
Just so, does anybody have any concerns with me sitting in this case?
Standing.
Oh, go ahead.
I did volunteer.
Oh, do the second one.
Okay, I'll switch off. The applicant has requested three waivers to the subdivision regulations. The first waiver is the requirement of showing only the structures and features that are on the proposed lot 56 in the area of interest on lot 56-1 and not outside the area of interest or on the abutting lots, Article 5.3.1 parentheses 8 of the subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of these regulations.
Motion to grant the waiver?
One second.
Rule call, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Sutchi, aye.
Tessa, aye.
Alan, aye.
Driscoll, aye.
I do have one question, actually, on that.
Sure.
Just for my own clarification. With the, I know, excuse me, I know the lot left is pretty significant, but it also has, would it looks like it will have multiple wetlands crossings to get into it?
Not crossings, it's just, it's already a call, but when, when they redid Oak Hill Road years ago, that this was all part of what they did out there and they left that driveway with the, with the call, but at the time that you didn't have the buffer and such, so now there's a buffer and we realize that at some time when this lot does get developed, that they're gonna have to go to the zoning board, additional use permit for the, to, to that buffer, but there isn't any wetland crossings.
Right, what I'm trying to make sure that I get to is we're not creating a, creating a subdivided lot that requires all kinds of waivers to actually develop and build on, and that there's enough contiguous uplands, like it looks like if you come in, you have to get a waiver in through the buffer on the front section, but I don't know what the upland is there on that front.
The wetlands way back here, so there's plenty, this, this whole, front is all uplands. There is no other crossing, there's just, just that one area.
As a matter of fact, that's where we did the test pits.
Right, is in that section, that's where it says.
So there is no crossing.
I, I just didn't know how much contiguous uplands was in that front section.
Why? I think, what I put down here, right?
Cause then it looks like.
Eight acres plus in just this area.
Eight?
Just that area.
That's what I was wondering, that was all I was trying to clarify, thank you.
No questions? Proceed with the second one. And second request, did waiver is requirement showing only natural features that are on the proposed lot 56 in the area of interest on lot 56-1 and not outside the area of interest or on the abutting lots in Article 5.3.1 parentheses 9 of the subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship on the applicant, granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. There a motion to grant this waiver?
Make a motion to grant the waiver?
I'll second that. Rule call, please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Sutchi, aye.
Tessa, aye.
Alan, aye.
Driscoll, aye.
Waiver number three, the requirement of test pit data to use the NHDES-approved ECA 2016102124 dated 10/21/2016, septic design on lot 56 and lieu performing new test pits in Article 5.2.3 parentheses 4. Not granting the waiver would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a motion to grant this waiver? Part of this also, as I said, with the septic design. Yes, I saw that, yep. Okay, I'll make that motion, seconded?
I'll second it.
Rule call.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Sutchi, aye.
Tessa, aye.
Alan, aye.
Driscoll, aye. You did receive a note that some from the planning department dated August 28th, mentioning general comments from the checklist that have to be completed, I guess. And I've addressed it with her. You have, okay, very good. I'm just going through the motions here. And I have one more question from you. I was very interested to see on the second sheet that you cite that Oak Hill Road was laid out on March 8th, 1765. I'm just interested as a historian here, so it's, did you get that from the town records or state? Town records have that, huh? That's why, one of the requirements you keep on asking us for, put that on the plan for the layout. Yeah. You guys are the keepers, I have to go to. It's in the vault somewhere. To get that all the time, but. Good, all right, that's interesting.
The records I have for our house are dated to 1764.
Wow.
For you, sort of aligns, you know.
Amazing, huh? Well, it said originally.
I know a lot of history about this area and this property, I've been there for 35 years, so.
Not that long ago. I'm back to 700, I reckon, not that long ago.
Originally, it was in, like an easement over another lot to get back in there before the road was built?
That, that's correct, and yet at one time, the access to this property was a right-of-way that was granted through the, what was the Ed Lemos's property at the time. But after Oak Hill Road was put through, that kind of went by the wayside, and our, a new driveway was put in, which was actually the original driveway to the house, but when Oak Hill Road, you know, became.
Class 6.
Class 6 road and wasn't maintained anymore, that wasn't a viable option, so the only way into our property was to our neighbor's property and.
Open it to public comment?
I have one more question.
Oh, sure.
You know, the, looking at the assessors' question that, you know, the, the outbuildings and stuff can't be in the current use, if you lose your current use, you still want to go forward with this?
That, that's correct. We, we've done a pretty significant detailed drawing that shows that we feel like we're, you know, within the two acre.
If I look at these outbuildings and all that stuff, it looks like way more than 20%, I mean, and that's not, but, nothing to do with.
No, huh, it does, and when I did all my drawing and stuff, it's, yeah, you got something just under two acres, includes all those areas.
These buildings and the, everything, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The one building that's really on the outside, outside is labeled a shed, it's actually a horse stall and there's a pasture in front of that, so it's really one of these areas that, you know, is kind of very gray as to, you know, whether it's farmland or not, you know.
You know, really my question is, if, if you don't care, current use is not for us, if, if, I'm just pointing out.
Different department.
Nope, understood, you understood.
I said the same thing way in the beginning. Going to open it to public comments, does anybody have any comments on this application? Anybody online?
If anybody online is for or against this application, please raise your hand, give you a moment here. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody for or against, or for public comment on this application.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Before we proceed to notice of decision, does anybody have any comment?
Well, one more from everybody assessors, it's the requirement from the Department of Revenue to have a map of what not current use for many measurements. Who's gonna deal with that?
Well, you said you're talking to the assessors' office about these items that are listed here.
He provided a plan to her, I saw it, but ultimately it's gonna.
Current use, yeah, current use is assessors' thing.
Yeah, cause the note goes back to August, right, August 1st or something, this note, so things have been cleaned up since then. Okay, proceed with the notice of decision? I'll, let me do it.
Do you want to make a decision and vote afterward?
We can split it.
I'll do this one, it's fine. The application is to be conditionally approved by the planning board at its September 5th, 2023 meeting. This application has met all the town's ordinances and regulations in accordance with the town of Barrington, New Hampshire subdivision regulations amended August 1st, 2023, and the Barrington zoning ordinance amended March 28th, 2023. All the precedent conditions must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met, the plans are certified and approval is considered Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within the 12 calendar months of the day of September 5th, 2024, excuse my typo there, the board's approval will be considered a lapse unless a mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. The condition precedent are as follows. Add to the planning notes, at the September 5th, 2023, planning board meeting, the board approved the waivers for, number one, the requirement showing only the structures and features that are on the proposed lot 56 in the area of interest on lot 56-1 and are not outside the area of interest or on the abutting lots from Article 5.3.1 parentheses 8 of the subdivision regulations. Number two, the requirement of showing only natural features are proposed lots 56 in the area of interest on lot 56-1 and not outside the area of interest or on the abutting lots of Article 5.3.9 parentheses 9 of the subdivision regulations. Number three, the requirement of test pit data to use NHDES-approved E, capital C, capital A, 2016102124 dated 10/21/2016, the septic design on lot 56 and lieu performing new test pits in Article 5.3.2 parentheses 4, and adding to the following to the plan, zoning districts of the properties, owner's signature, Whitland scientist's signature, professional surveyor's signature, NHDES permit number. The subdivision recordings fees are to be paid, the exact recording fee and return shipping to be determined by the staff of registry of deeds, and we'll do that through our office, this is a newer thing, do that. Payments will be need, to be payable to the Strafford County Registry of Deeds, the town, town staff will provide the costs and the plans are submitted to the planning board chair. The other fee is the L chip fee of $25 payable to the Strafford County Registry of Deeds, certificate of monumentation installation submitted to the town. At final submit, all, all sending comments to the applicant from the town planner subdivision regulations shall be addressed. And prior to obtaining board's signature, the applicant shall submit two full-size paper copies of the subdivision plan, sorry, I made an error on that. One 11 by 17 copy in PDF file format with supporting documents as required with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval to the land use office. The planning board shall sign and date all plans made and the conditions of approval. The board shall endorse two full-size copies of the subdivision plans for their records and 11 by 17 copy in PDF file format for the case file folder. And under the general and subsequent conditions, the current use subject property, a portion of it is in presently in current use, the applicant must provide the town of Barrington assessing department current use map and our other items need to assure the requirements of RSA 79A and the New Hampshire Department of Revenue administration's rules are satisfied. Thank you very much and we wish you the best of your, best of luck on your project.
You said NHDES permits? No required.
Oh, because you're, you're using the existing.
No, the lots rule of five acres, we don't. Is there a motion to approve the notice of decision? Make a motion to approve the notice of decision?
I'll second it.
Rule call.
Before I vote, Todd, I just wanted to say my condolences on the death of your mother. I knew Phyllis, in fact, my husband married she and Guy, she was a wonderful woman, and I vote in favor of them.
Sutchi, aye.
Tessa, aye.
Alan, aye.
Driscoll, aye. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Talk to you later. New applications, item D2, lot number 269-7 and 7-1 in the general residential district, 23 LL, owner James W. Haley, welcome. Here. My name's Joel Reynolds from North Plains, here to represent Jim and his plot line He's already gotten disapproved as a subdivision a short time ago, since then he's decided that he'd like to lot a little smaller and a little different configuration. Back here is, is a kind of a field area that he would like to keep control of it a little bit more than he is the way we have proposed it before, so, and making it a little bit smaller, make it closer to the minimum lot size we'd pay in for this, the town. We did need to do new test pits, but we're gonna have to go through, once I get approval for the town, we gotta go back to the D's to get.
So is this the corner, like the changing? I wasn't clear what the change was.
Yeah, yeah, it's not that.
Okay.
So. Should be showing.
You didn't get the package yet? You didn't get a draw either? Joyce didn't get, Joyce didn't get the old package either.
Get full-size plans if you want.
This is typical, yeah.
Any preliminary questions before we take a vote to accept the application as complete? Is there a motion to accept? Is there a motion to accept the application as complete? Make a motion to accept the application as complete?
Second it.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Yeah, bye.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead.
Uh, do you want to go right to the waivers? There are. All right, let's see here, I've got, uh, waivers. Yep, requested waivers to subdivision regulations. First one is the requirement of surveyed property lines including angles or bearings, distances, monument, locations, and the size of the entire parcel. Said plan must be attested to and stamped by a licensed land surveyor licensed in the state of New Hampshire. Signature, seal, and license number shall be legible and include in Article 5 dot 3 dot 1, uh, parentheses, 5 of the subdivision regulations. The reference plan shows a survey of the entire parcel, it was recorded at Stratford County deeds. Not granting the waiver poses unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Is there a motion to grant?
Just my question is for this new, this new proposed lot, is there, are there pins and stuff that find a new lot?
Well, we already staked a lot for the subdivision.
The original lot.
Yeah, last August. So, we already staked it, now we're going to stake, re-stake the new.
Yeah.
And, and the reason why the waiver for the entire boundary, a lot of its installation, and there was a, done of all, and I tied into that boundary, associated with that, it's just that I didn't put it on my plan such a big piece. That plan for the entire boundary has been surveyed and it's.
And the new lot is going to be, the bounties are going to be marked and.
We're asking for waiver. Just, it's just to do the bow of that.
Plan of the entire lot.
To show it on my plan here.
Yeah, because this is a huge.
So, you're adding more to the conservation?
Yeah, taking out some of the, the nicer pasture part and, uh, adding some of the, of the conservation piece.
Okay, any motions to grant this waiver?
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
Second that. Roll call, please.
Yeah, bye. It was John.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead. Second waiver is the requirement of showing only the structures and features that are on proposed Lot 7, the area of interest on Lot 7-1, and not outside the area of interest around the abutting lots in Article 5.3.1, parentheses, 8 of the subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver poses unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit or intent of regulations. Discussion before we take a motion to grant this waiver?
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
On alley? Roll call, please.
Yeah, bye.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead. Next requested waiver is requirement of showing only the natural features that are on the proposed Lot 7 and the area of interest on Lot 7-1. Remaining 80 acre conservation area, easement area or abutting lots in Article 5 dash dot 3 dash dot 1, parentheses, 9 of the subdivision regulations. Not granting the waiver poses unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Discussion before we take a vote? Okay.
Make a motion to grant the waiver.
Okay, second that, roll call.
Yeah, bye.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
Just go ahead.
And finally, we have, uh, the requirement of man-made features such as but not limited to existing roads, stone walls, pedestrian ways, cemeteries, or other structures. Plans should also indicate which structures are to be retained, which are to be removed or altered in Article 5, 3.1, parentheses, 10. Applicant response, our waiver request is to show only those structures that are in the area of interest being developed, not on the remaining 40 acres or on abutting lots. Now, granting the waiver would pose unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Discussion? Is there a motion? Grant this waiver? I'm just getting all seconded by Driscoll. Roll call, please.
Yeah, bye.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead. Okay. Okay. So, we've done the waivers, any further discussion before we read the notice of decision? And any public comment? I will open that public comment. Nobody's jumping up, so anybody online?
No, Mr. Chairman, there's no one online for public comment for this application.
Okay, closing public comment. Let me read the notice of decision. Okay, thank you. Little drag.
At the Barrington Planning Board, September 5th, 2023 meeting, conditionally approved your application. The application has met all the town ordinances and regulations of the Town of Barrington. All the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of plans are required prior to commencement of site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met, the plans are certified and approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within 12 calendar months of the day, September 5th, 2024, the board's approval will be considered of lapse unless a mutually agreeable extension has been granted by the board. The condition precedent are as follows. Add the following to plan notes, at the September 5th, 2023, planning board meeting, the board approved the waivers for the requirement of the survey property lines including angles or bearings, distances, monument, locations, and size of the entire parcel. Said plan must be attested to and stamped by a licensed surveyor licensed in the state of New Hampshire. Signature, seal, and license number shall be legible included in the plan, Article 5.3.1, parentheses, 5, subdivision regulations. The requirement, the second waiver is the requirement of showing only the structures and features that are on the proposed Lot 7 and area of interest on 7.1, not outside the area of interest or in abutting lots in Article 5.3.1, parentheses, 8 of the subdivision regulations. The third waiver is the requirement of showing only the natural features that are on proposed Lot 7 and the area of interest on Lot 7-1, the remaining 80 acre conservation in easement area or on the abutting lots in Article 5.3.1, parentheses, 9, subdivision regulations. The requirement of man-made features such as but not limited to existing roads, stone walls, pedestrian wa- ways, cemeteries, and other structures. The plan should also indicate what structures are to be retained and which are removed or altered as in Article 5.3.1, parentheses, 10. Adding to the following plan, zoning districts of all properties, owner's signature, wetland scientist signature, professional surveyor signature, NHDES permit number, state subdivision approval number. Subdivision recording fees are to be paid of exact recording and fee and return shipping to be determined by the Stratford County Registry of Deeds. The L chip fee. Number four is our certificate of monument installation submitted to the town. And number five, final submit, all outstanding comments to the applicant from town planner subdivision regulations shall be addressed. Number six, prior to obtaining board's signature, the applicant shall submit two full-size paper copies of the subdivision plan, one 11 by 17, in PDA file format with supporting documents as required with letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval to the land use office. The planning board chair should sign and date all plans meeting the conditions of approval. The board shall endorse two full-size copies of the subdivision plans for their recording and 11 by 17 copy in PDF A file format for the case file folder. In New Jersey, all subsequent conditions, this current used subject property, a portion of it is presently in current use, the applicant must provide Town Bearing Testing Apartment current use map and/or other items needed to ensure requirements of RSA 79A and the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration rules are satisfied. Thank you, and we wish you the best of luck on your project.
Is there a motion to approve the notice of decision? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Yeah, bye.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New applications, item B3, Lot 250-39, NR-23, two lots, owner Lauren Valier, Zachary Tucker.
My name's Joel Reynolds, I'm here to represent my clients to this subdivision. Trying to do is they, they have a long bowling alley lot here, it's created that way. And they, they have, they built their house up in the front part of it, and it's also part of the, they got approved site review from the town to their business, it's a, it's called Stop Trailer Shop. Business out of this. Trying to do is create a lot out front, it's two acre lot, and the remaining land will be for another buildable area. We try to do is we use the match line, which is the, it's two pieces of land, if you look at the plan here, there's, there's two pieces, but it's all one, connected by that match line. And the area out beyond the public service right of way is, uh, we didn't do any wetland delineation up here. Find it into the edge of the easement. So, when I say the area of interest, that's, that's where we're talking about, which exceeds the lot sizing that we need. Uh, we realize that, what we're hoping to get is that the application accepted tonight, but I realize that it can't be approved because we're going to be, because the frontage for this back lot, wetlands over there, and because of that, we're going to have to have a driveway easement. It's going to utilize the existing driveway, cut across over into the, the neck of the back lot. We realize we have to go to the, get a, so there's only going to get a conditional use permit as well as a setback for the, 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 the code enforcement is feeling that that's needs to be, not setback, so. We, we submitted an application to them last week, the deadline was last, the 30th, so we set, submitted that, so we know that. And also in conversation with Vanessa, realized that we have to amend the existing site to, and I'm crying like hell to get that done, and I'm trying to go on vacation, and that's due coming, so, so, so I guess that's due next week is the deadline, so my, my, my goal is to get a revised site plan in for next week, so that hopefully that you can accept the application tonight, continue the hearing, come back the next month, I'll have the site plan as well as the subdivision. And, and by that time, we've been to the zoning board as well.
Okay. The staff indicates that all documents requesting information needed prior to opening a public hearing have been received, so. Any preliminary questions before we vote to accept the application?
In my time in the board, would never accept an application that hasn't got the ZBA. I don't, I don't think I've ever been a, never happened.
It, that, and I raised a, talked with Vanessa about my concerns, this was, this got a conditional, this got permitted with a waiver request to, to use it as a mixed-use property with commercial use and a plan set that specifically has a whole bunch of layouts, and it's no longer going to comply with anything that was done for that prior, prior plan set. I would be hard pressed to move anything forward without having both site plans come back through at that time. Because you cannot carry on with the use as, as is with the idea of changing this lot and removing all of them.
Yeah, and I was going to submit the.
I wouldn't accept this as stage without any of that information.
That's fine, I, I was going by Vanessa's recommendation that the application accepted tonight, it's fine. I can understand that.
I'm caught in the middle, no, um. He was, um, seeking tonight to have the application continued. If the board feels the application is not complete, I completely understand, because we did have discussions of, do you want to go to the ZBA first, the planning, there's no, it's highly recommended you go to the ZBA first, but you don't have to do one or the other, but your planning application could be held up due to those. So, that being said, right, so that being said, you can say, you could continue this case till the next meeting until those criteria are fulfilled, and then you'll be able to listen to the application and consider it completed at that meeting.
I wrote the ZBA stake down.
The ZBA is this month.
Hasn't got the necessary ZBA approvals.
And I, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to argue, I, I agree with you.
I mean.
I agree with you.
Rules are different, but that, in the time I've been on the board, if it needs ZBA, we've all kicked it back.
Is the applicant also aware that their current conditions on that site are not in compliance with what their approved requests were?
Just a note for the board, um, I did talk to John before coming to the meeting, the code enforcement officer, he has not received any formal complaints or issues on the property. It could, I mean, until we get a written complaint, they don't, he doesn't have record for that, so, just to let everybody know.
Eyeballs. Okay, so, do you want a motion to continuance? Yep. To the next meeting?
October 3rd meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to grant the continuance to the October 3rd meeting?
You're requesting a continuance, right?
Yes. Right.
I will not be present at the October 3rd meeting or so.
Will you be here?
Last one. No, no, I had, uh, had surgery.
Is it serious, you're not going to have a roll call?
You want to board us ever again?
No, no, I just.
Get a formal motion.
I will make the motion to grant the continuance to the October 3rd. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Aye. I won't be here.
That's okay, you're here today.
Should be double I, yeah.
Four of you are here.
Happy yellow eye. So, G.I.
Tess, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead. Continue to the third.
Thank you very much.
Fuck, luck.
Oh, no, don't go there.
Say it to everybody.
Take care.
Take care.
Guys, hold on to your packets.
Yes. Item B4, Lot 253-14-GR/SDAO-23-SR, owner Hambone LLC. Requested by the applicant for a major site plan review for seven multifamily units with waivers on 49 Winkley Pond Road. Lot 253, Lot 14, it's a 13.47 acre lot, this draft would drift, uh, aquifer overlay in district and the general residential zoning district. Mr. Christopher Barry, representing Barry Surveying and Engineering, will be here. Hello?
Hello, Mr. Chair, I'm Green, okay. Members of the board, my name is Christopher Barry again with Barry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant here, Hambone LLC, 49 Winkley. Members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry again with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the applicant here, Hambone LLC, 49 Winkley Pond Road. Here in Barrington. With me tonight is Rob Baldwin, the, one of the principal members of Hambone LLC. And you may remember Rob from our design review hearing that we conducted with the board on this application. And has done a number of small projects in the town over the years. Just a brief overview and sort of history. To catch the board up to speed and some of the abutting landowners up to speed on a few of the topics that we had at our design review hearing. We were hired to do an existing conditions plan as well as a boundary survey of the site at 49 Winkley Pond. We hired Deidre Benjamin, who's a certified wetland scientist. To delineate the jurisdictional wetland boundaries as well as the very poorly drained boundaries of wetlands on site. We asked Jack Hayes, who's a, both a certified wetland scientist, but also a certified soil scientist. To also review the very poorly drained boundary on site. And so you'll notice both her stamp and his on the plans. And at the design review hearing, the abutters felt as though the delineation of the wetland boundary was inaccurate. Based on when and the time of year that the work was conducted. And so we asked Jack Hayes to go out and review the jurisdictional wetland boundary. He asked that we meet Deidre on site and we sort of re-review the wetland boundary. In the lower section of the property behind the existing single family home, sort of adjacent to where the existing well is. And the summer, this summer, earlier this summer, we redelineated that area for jurisdictional wetlands. And what we found is that the jurisdictional vegetation boundary has actually moved up slope a little bit. And so the plans have been modified to account for that small bit of additional wetlands found on site. And then the 50 foot buffer that applies to that wetland, so. I think one of the misunderstandings for maybe the passersby's or the abutting landowners. Jack had flagged his very poorly drained boundary and his flags are still very visible. And if you look at them, as you're standing on the site, you're basically looking at them out over standing water. And so if you don't understand that there was another set of flags for the poorly drained boundary, which have now been mowed down because it's a field. You would think that we were calling the jurisdictional wetland boundary out over the standing water, but that's not the case. Those areas are what's known as very poorly drained soils. They have saturated wetlands all the time or long periods of time. And certainly this year, they're highly saturated, so. We wanted to sort of present that to the board, the board had asked if we would take a second look at them, we have. There were minor adjustments made in the field because of them. And we've designed our site around that most current data. So the existing, the remaining existing site features, there's an existing barn on site that's now scheduled to be removed. There's an existing single family home that's now scheduled to be removed, and so essentially we're starting with a blank slate. We were trying to work around some of these features. Rob has done this in many other projects, mostly in other towns and municipalities where we renovate a barn structure. And we repurpose it and reutilize it. In this particular case, just given where it is on the roadway, at the crest of the hill, given the condition that it's in. We're proposing to remove that in this application, but originally we were trying to work around it. The large portion of the front section of the property is maintained lawn and field. This year, less and less of it was maintained because of how saturated the soils are in that area. But there's a distinct wooded boundary along the jurisdictional wetland line on site. The soils in that upper field area are highly transmissive, so there's sands and gravels. And as you get closer to that wetland boundary, they are still highly transmissive, but you have seasonal high water tables that are higher in the profile. And then of course, as you get into the wetland boundary, you have saturated soils nearly to the surface. And that's represented on the site specific soils map that Jack has prepared for you. The project proposal. Is to utilize section 4.2 in the general residential zone to permit seven residential units on the property. We've chosen to break this into two sites or two pads essentially. The primary reason for that is to ensure that we can make all of the site features fit within the limits that we have. We do have a prime wetland on site. That requires a 100 foot setback to the very poorly drained soils within the wetlands and we have a 50 foot buffer on site as well. Being in the general residential zone, we do have a 40 foot front setback and a 30 foot side setback, so. As you apply all of those setbacks and you apply the roadway design standards and other standards within your regulations, you. Start having constrained space, and so we're looking to break that up to ensure that we can make all of our site features fit. But also to reduce massing. The last reason is the best soils are in the area where we're proposing the effluent disposal system. And we'd like to keep that in that area for that purpose and for that reason, just based on the soils that we have in that area and the deeper seasonal high water tables we have and the sandy soils there. We are in the stratified drift aquifer overlay district. There are no regulations within that ordinance that apply to this particular use in site. They apply to heavy load sites or heavy use sites, which this is not, this is a residential project with residential uses. If we were storing materials or storing fuels or things like that, it would either be not permitted or require a special exception or variance. We're not proposing any of those items exist on site. All of the utilities on site are proposed to be electric, so we'll have electric utilities, there will be no need for propane or other fuels on site. And the housing that we're proposing is townhouse style structures with parking underneath and bedrooms and living space above those. The 4.2 regulations have a calculation within them that allows for seven units on site, but one of the units needs to be a one bedroom design. To accommodate that within the actual building structure itself. You'll notice from the architectural renderings that unit number five actually steps down in elevation in massing. And that's to remove the building square footage and the building bedroom count on the second and third floor. We are proposing a common well, this falls under a non-transient system, it is not a public water supply system. And we are proposing a common effluent disposal system. We are showing an LP tank there, so we did give the option for liquid propane use. Most likely these will be electric, electric units, commonly we use. The newer mini split systems for heating and cooling in these buildings, but we do have a place for an LP tank if needed.
Okay, you're showing two of them.
Yes, yep. The fire chief had commented that a fire cistern was required, so we are proposing a 30,000 gallon cistern. Originally, we had a location picked out inside of our project for that. We thought that it would be better served from a community standpoint if we placed that on Winkley Pond Road. So we've moved that cistern out so it'd be more of a general public purpose use and provided the aprons to and from it and a pad in front of it. To be utilized as well. Stormwater is handled through two systems, there's an infiltration system that's proposed where we capture offsite water. Roof runoff, which is considered clean stormwater and infiltrated into the first infiltration system. And then there's a rain garden that's central to the project where all of the impervious surface from the site is gathered. And sent for treatment as well as attenuation of flow and volume. That is then sent to what's known as a level spreader, it's spread out and then discharged back to the wetlands in the same rate and volume that it was originally designed for. We have provided for grading on site, there's a wellhouse on site, the wellhouse is proposed to have an access road to it. And there is a small retaining feature that's proposed on site to ensure that no grading or disturbance of the wetland buffer takes place. Part of the stormwater analysis, we found that we, the remaining area draining to the wetland, even though we weren't touching it, was actually. Increasing flow to the wetland and that has to do with, we call it an anomaly in stormwater, but essentially. All of the remaining land in the subcatchment has a higher weighted curve number and increases artificially increases flow to that wetland. And so to combat that, we are proposing that we plant the buffer with wooded vegetation moving forward. And so you'll see our landscape plan has vegetation proposed inside that buffer. To ensure that all of our peak rates are both functionally, but also from a modeling standpoint. Reduced in the post-conduction or post-construction flow. I think other than the wetlands location, the original topic of conversation had to do with the design review, had to do with site distance. We've now moved this roadway to the apex of the hill, so Winkley Pond crests along our, about midway down our project frontage. We're now proposing that our driveway come off that apex, so we have good site distance in both directions. The road agent has commented on that in your packets that this is far superior and meets the roadway regulations for site distance now. We did provide a trip generation memo, the site review regulations don't require that we provide a short form or a long short, or a long form. Because we don't meet the trip generation threshold for a full impact analysis. And so we did for the board's review, provide a trip generation memo that demonstrates the number of trips coming to and from the site. There's approximately three or four in the morning and four or five in the afternoon. Total daily flow or total daily volume is approximately 50 trips. Parking on site again is handled either under the structure or in front of the garage doors. And so there's adequate parking both for the residents, but also for overflow parking for guests moving forward. I think the only last thing that is really commented on in the staff report has to do with the intersections of Winkley Pond and 125. In both the north and the south locations. We have reached out to DOT and Vanessa, we've received the. Study that was conducted on 125 and how DOT needs to review those intersections, there's a number of different schematic plans. That they're reviewing as to how to modify these intersections to make them safer. Believe that study is being conducted by VHB engineers. And the town staff has commented on how they would like to see those intersections be realigned. We take no objection to those suggestions, those intersections really have very little to do with us. If there's a plan to approve those intersections, what we might suggest is a small offsite improvement. Most of DOT projects of this size have both DOT money, but also local money that goes into those projects. And we would suggest a small offsite improvement that would go into the, the public Barrington side of that. To help make whatever improvements come out of the recommended study there. We're not in a position with this number of units where we can make any of those changes. We're not, and I don't think DOT is in a position to recommend any of those changes at this point because the studies aren't done. But we recognize that we are providing for a small incremental amount of traffic increase and so a small incremental. In lieu fee may be in order, but barring that, we don't think that we're really impacting those intersections substantially with our development. But we do admit that those intersections need help, they come in at odd angles. People utilize them in peculiar ways as they're trying to. Move and navigate across 125 and onto Winkley Pond Road, so we do, we do recognize that. We have read the study, we understand the study. And until there's a concrete plan to bring before the town of Barrington. We offer a small in lieu fee offsite for that purpose. We understand that the stormwater analysis and maybe the traffic trip generation memo would go to CEMA engineers for review. There was one last comment from the conservation commission, which we didn't really fully understand. There's an offsite area that grades down onto our site, so it's sort of steep and then flattens out in our field. We are proposing to butt our buildings up against that slope, but we, we've included a swale system at the back of those buildings to capture that offsite flow. And get it around our building into an infiltration system and then discharge it down through the field where it naturally goes. There is no proposed flow that's being discharged either onto Hayes Road or Winkley Pond Road. All of the flow that comes off from those roads now will persist moving forward and we've accommodated for all those flows in our design. Lastly, we are requesting three waivers, Mr. Chair, I can itemize out those now or later in the presentation if you'd like.
Yeah, everybody has the waivers, so. I think you don't have to. Mention them at this point.
I don't need to mention them now, is that what you said?
No.
Okay.
Everybody have any, are you finished?
Sure.
Any questions on the, on this application?
I have a lot of questions.
That's good, that's why we proceed.
So I was trying to figure out how you got to the yield plan that you have for this?
Yep.
And is, are you classifying this as a PUD or?
So multifamily is permitted in the zone under a conditional use, so we would have to apply for a conditional use to the board as well. And under that, section 4.2 discusses a set of calculations that are required. You to meet, those density calculations are found on page five of 31, top left corner. Where article four, section 2, 1, 1 through 3. And then it's a series of tests, so the total site has to be divisible by 80,000 square feet, so each. Additional unit requires an additional 80,000 square feet. Each additional, that's a two bedroom or a greater unit. Each additional two bedroom or greater unit requires an additional 60,000 square feet of buildable uplands. And then each additional two bedroom unit or greater requires an additional 35,000 square feet of contiguous uplands. And then a one bedroom unit requires half, nearly half of all of those calculations. And it's iterative, so in the event you want more one bedroom versus two bedroom. You could work it so that you'd have more of those units and less of a two bedroom type.
Sorry, I'm just trying to process here as I, because I had looked through it and. The, so this, I look at the 4.2.1, which are the standards for general residential and the NR district.
Mike, could you bring the mic a little closer?
Sorry, but 4.2 is where we talk about multifamily housing is specific to the village district.
Note 4.2.1 talks about. The multifamily use in the NR zone and the GR zone.
Single family. Talks about accessory dwellings, but I don't see a reference to multifamily.
I'll pull it up right now.
It has 4.2.1, parents three for each additional dwelling unit under a common roof containing two or more bedrooms.
That's.
Which does not qualify as an accessory dwelling unit.
That's the section we're referring to.
The minimum standard said in paragraph one above shall be increased. And when I reference back to paragraph one. I'm assuming I'm looking at the minimum lot size. size is prescribed by Table 2. And then to go to Table 2... Is where, is where it makes the reference to the 80,000 square feet. But again, I don't, it doesn't have anything on the shrinking side of it. I'm just, as I bounced around, I was flipping through each part of it, and I was like, okay, is this a PUD? Is this a?
Nope. So it's, the use is permitted by conditional use. And then 4.2.1 talks about standards for GR and R. 4.2.1.1, 4.2.1.2, 4.2.1.3, then itemize out for every additional unit under one roof, essentially multifamily. That 80,000 square feet are required in the base, 60,000 are required, 35,000 are required. Then each additional bedroom beyond that, each additional one-bedroom dwelling has a set of circumstances under 4.2.2, and then each additional two-bedroom or larger under 4.2.1.1 is the calculation provided. And the 80,000 in the, in the table that you're referring to is for a single lot of record, or for a proposed single lot with frontage requirements and setbacks.
Right. And this is an existing single lot.
Right. So essentially, 4.2.1 reiterates what that table says. And then 4.2.1.2 provides the calculation for the additional units.
And, and I guess here's where I was, I was kind of back and forth, and as I, reading through it, it's a, it's a splitting hairs, because when you, you look at the minimum lot size for multifamily housing, it talks about that it shall be 80,000 square feet for the first dwelling unit, which must include 35,000 square feet of contiguous uplands area. Each additional dwelling unit should require 40,000 square feet of upland area per dwelling unit. And, you know, I guess I, this is where the word contiguous means something.
Yep. And so that's why we broke this out into different pods, so that each one of the upland pods on the site.
Well, I guess that's where I keep struggling with it, is it's not under one roof at that point, so it's no longer a contiguous multifamily unit. It's now a PUD.
Nope. So it's multifamily under one unit, or multiple units under one roof, or multiple of those onsite is what generates the definition of multifamily. But the density is what this section refers to.
Right, for the density, but the defining characteristic of a multi, of the multifamily, is it, talks about it being under one roof. You're no longer under one roof.
We have two multi-unit buildings.
Right, but now you're, you've, you've broken your connection to it as a multi-unit.
I don't believe so. When we talked to John about this, that wasn't his interpretation either.
So when I look at 4.2.1/3, each additional dwelling unit under a common roof containing two or more bedrooms, under a common roof being the key component there.
So it generates the ability to do a multifamily site up to eight units in one building? Because you also have a regulation that says we can't have more than eight in one building. The 35, the density is where we have the different pods throughout the site that we've utilized.
Right, but that, this is where I'm, I'm caught on it, is it's not aligned as a multifamily. You'd be, it's more of a, a PUD at that point. Because the multifamily is under one contiguous roof, and what you're proposing is not under one.
So if we were to take the seven and put them on one to one common building? I mean, once it's a multifamily site, it's a multifamily site.
I just don't think it meets the regulation. That's where I'm, where I was at with it, because when I read it, it doesn't.
Mr. Chairman, if I just address the board on a side note, or maybe conjunction to this. The code enforcement officer, I did speak with him before about the density and the units, and he didn't see any issues with it. So just, I know that Chris had already stated that, but.
Chris, you already talked to him.
And, um.
His calculation.
Those are the correct.
He did a lot of the same flipping Andy's currently doing to understand how this operates, yes. Yep.
I had looked through it, I just don't think it meets the regulation if you actually follow it as it's written. But that's, I am one person, and that's my perspective.
Oftentimes, we have to fall back on those.
I hear you. Code. What we are charged with following as a board.
Any more comments before we, the motion to accept the application is complete? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the application is complete?
Make a motion to accept the, it's complete. I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Yep, nay?
Sis, you're right.
Al, aye?
Driscoll, aye? Any more comments on anything? Just had a couple of questions. I did note, these notes before you did your presentation. I noticed that, as you cited, the, there was a change in the wetlands delineation. So it looks like you lost 7,860 square feet of uplands. But I see in your calculations, you already accounted for that.
Yes.
Down to 88,435.
That's correct.
Uh, there was some concern discussed by some of the staff about possible headlights hitting the house across the street. I think their elevate, base elevation is like 174, and the car area adjacent to the garages is 164, so. But then maybe the headlights are elevated about three and a half feet above the car, so. I was wondering if it's possible maybe to put a four-foot fence along that edge of the 42 feet that encompasses the park area, parking area. You may have to turn it at an angle since.
Are you referring to this area here?
Yeah.
Yep, that's not.
Okay. I think four feet would be enough. Uh, let's see. There was some comments, and you may have talked about it. The way I read the comments from the planning board, the Conservation Commission, was that they were thinking that the property was higher than the road, and the edge of pavement is what, 170?
It is.
171, and you're at 164, so just the opposite is going to take place.
That's right.
Just wanted to clear that up for the record, in case they have any questions.
I think they may have thought that some of the off-site flow would come down and hit maybe the back of our building and then point at the roadway. But we've accounted for that in our grading.
Okay. A couple of these things you've hit, so I can get rid of them here. This is a, seems like a very robust drainage plan, using the sloped granite curbing. It's something we don't usually see in this town, so. Is that going to impact the use of the snow storage area?
Nope, we, we don't think so.
It's going to push out, lift it and push the snow.
Yeah, so it would be piled and then lifted, lifted off the back. That's why sloped was chosen.
Yep, okay. And finally, during the preliminary discussion, there was some notes, mentioned that the units would be more architecturally pleasing than the Windsor Way ones to fit the rural character of the area and the barn and farmhouse across the street. In other words, it wouldn't have that industrial look to it. It'd be broken up, the facades might be broken up, I realize they are, but maybe the materials would be different.
Yeah, so our, you can see from the architecturals that.
I didn't get that sheet, so. What?
It's the big one?
They're pretty good, actually. Yeah. Yeah, they have. Paul, they're in the back here. I don't think he's got it. He's right here. Uh, yeah, I don't think I've got it. No. Oh, there's a better one, actually.
Sorry. Package, and the chairman didn't get it.
Yeah, there they are. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, I think it looks better.
The ones, the, these are much more broken up than the ones on Windsor Way.
Okay. Oh, thanks. Uh, I think that's the only questions I have. Anybody else? Comments before I open it to the public? Oh, you should do the waivers. Okay. Yeah, any questions you got.
For plenty of time. Last time we saw this, the conceptual, whatever it was, I, I thought I asked for designated visitor parking, I didn't see any of that. I know you have more parking spaces required, but designated visitor, visitor parking is something that we're looking for.
Yeah, we, we haven't added any additional spaces. We added the spaces in front of the doors. We could look at adding one or two spaces, maybe off to the left and right of each one of the units.
Yeah, I think, you know, people are visitors, they have parking or something like that, they don't like to park in, park in other guys' driveway. So I think visitor parking spaces are important for people to get along in communities. Other questions on this? I didn't, do you have mailboxes to find on this thing?
Yes.
Where, where was that? I didn't see that.
I'll have to check.
What you doing?
It's been 30 days since I looked at these. Right past, when you look at the, on Sheet 6 of 31, it's. Yep. Proposed eight mail, eight-door mailbox, it's about, it's about. It's right by the. Right by the. Yeah, it's right by the. Here? The pump chamber for the septic system.
Got it.
Yeah, we had a similar question about the, getting back to the visitor parking. I was thinking next to the snow storage, we got the, what, 973 square feet, and unit number six, that area there. It doesn't look like it uses for anything else. Actually have a guardrail there. Does that drop off because of the guardrail?
Yeah, we have a, we have a steeper slope designed there with a level spreader at the base of it. We're proposing wall further on down the line. We could extend the wall and get the visitor parking in that area.
Yeah, I see, further down, you do have attached area, that's a wall.
Yeah.
It says by others?
Well, we're not a structural company, so the.
Oh, I see.
The block company.
Doesn't exist already, in other words.
Kind of, yeah. So we can, could extend this wall. Could extend this wall that way. Add a, a small visitor spaces here.
Okay, might be something to consider.
Seriously liking.
So. Two spaces probably would be enough. Two? All right, we're going to have a crowd, then they'll bust them in. Well, what's the distance there?
So part of the reason we don't have a dedicated lot is, once we have a dedicated lot, we have to have EDA compliance in that lot. So two spaces.
So it's easily, the unit's frontage is 24 feet, so you could probably put 30 feet in there.
Almost, almost four lots, four spaces. Forward to it. Uh, are these going to be rentals or?
Sold.
Sold?
No, they'll be rentals.
Okay.
Oh, okay, these will be sold.
Okay, in the wetland, so who's going to be responsible for that?
Yeah, so we have, well, if it's, they're going to be sold, then they would, we would have an HOA, and the stormwater maintenance manual gets plugged right into the HOA documents.
That, that's why it's last.
It's recorded.
Yeah.
So Leach Field, it does all, all units.
And same thing with that, we have a maintenance manual for that, so that each one of the landowner, each one of the unit owners would know what needs to take place on a yearly basis to maintain that system.
I noticed the Leach Field's in the back, I guess, this has nothing to do with complying. I was confused by why the pump station in the septic system was on that side of the building, the other, the side of the building is far us away from that. They have them down here by the, close to the road. You're going up here, it just, I was confused why you wouldn't have them over there.
The, why we wouldn't have the effluent disposal system over there, you mean? We have to be outside of our well radius.
Okay.
We can't have an EDA inside of the well radius, but we can have a well within 50, a tank within 50 feet of the well.
Okay, got it. And one of the things, you have a material laydown area, I didn't understand what that was. Is that during construction?
During construction.
During construction. Okay. Regulations require renderings of all sides? I mean, you have nice architectural ones, but I don't think you comply with that regulation with what you have.
We can, we can certainly provide flat views of all sides. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the, the renders don't only show, don't show the back, like, they don't show all sides.
Yep, no problem.
Also, you know, we've never got a lighting plan that was correct, and we still haven't. Your lighting plan shows wall units, the renders tend, seem to show ceiling units underneath the overhangs. The renderings show light poles, lighting plan does not. You have a little bit of a disconnect there.
We'll update the renderings.
Well, you got light the parking lot too, so you might, I think you have to light the parking lot, so you might only leave light poles in.
Well, then, Ron, I guess while we're discussing it, let's discuss it. Because I, I thought we provided adequate light in the parking lot. If you, and I mentioned this in my narrative, we're proposing just typical residential lamps on both the front and back of the buildings. If, if the board is looking for additional light inside the parking lot, we can add solar lamps. This is a rural area. I didn't know how much additional light we really wanted in that, in this area.
I mean, if nothing light goes out in the driving, that's fine, if you've got to put visitor parking, you just got to put some lighting on there.
Okay. And then remove the lamps from the rendering that, or don't exist.
And, you know, figure out, figure out how the lighting is going to be for the buildings too. Your, your lighting plan shows wall mounted, the renderings, there's no wall mounted on the renderings. So if they're under the ceiling, they just got to be referencing lighting plan correctly.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Uh, you mentioned that Unit 5, because it's going to be a one bedroom, would be lower than the other units? Is that what, did I misunderstand you?
Let me make sure the rendering's correct.
It doesn't look that way.
My old eyes.
The rendering will be updated.
I was concerned earlier, what are you going to do with that spare room if there's no closet in it, but.
They're demarcating there from the rest, so I wasn't sorry.
So that Unit 5 will not, it'll basically knock down, it'll drop down a step there, that last unit.
The rooms are great, I don't even know, they look great, but.
One question. Why is this one bedroom there? Is there a reason for that?
What's that?
Because it need, that's what they need, they could only get a one-bedroom in there to meet the yield plan.
Because it need, that's what they need, they could only get a one bedroom in there to meet the yield plan.
Oh, for that particular building, as opposed to putting it in the other?
Well, no, it has.
No, no, that's what I mean, why couldn't it be in the two unit one?
It'd be a little, because a two, if you, if you look at a two unit building and drop a floor off from a two unit building, that would just look goofy. This, you'll have four units across, and then it'll kind of naturally drop down. Well, I, it'll look a lot less, uh, goofy doesn't really appear in the regulations.
And it's far down, I understand what you're saying, okay, not a big deal.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What if the unit sat in the middle between it, allowing? Yeah.
Uh, we can look at that.
Just from the standpoint that rather than just having wall, wall, you actually could almost get window light, so if you had a bed up against that, now you have a transom window that allows light into that space on three of the four sides.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll look at, uh, how that might look.
You, yeah, using the transom windows high enough that it's not a.
So, Chris, if there's a, two, two bedroom units, right, there's some two, there's probably gonna be children, how is the bus, um, gonna be addressed? Will they have to pick up on one twenty-five, which is?
Uh.
Go to Chris.
I don't have an answer to that.
Can you find out? Because that's very important to me.
Yes, yeah.
Set the application before we open it to public? You've already. Do the waivers first, okay? Okay, that's, I lost my paper. No, I got it right here. Requested waivers, were three waivers requested, um.
Let's start with the first one.
Okay, start, and I'll do the other two.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right, I'll do the second one, you do the first and third.
Requirement of, in the site review, site review regulations, article four point eight point one, to if new, if new streets are to be built as part of the site plan, then the design and submission regulations shall comply with the Barrington subdivision regulations. The requirement of subdivision regulation, article twelve, table number one, minimum road centerline radius, whereas the private road is considered a major access in the road design, a minimum of hundred foot radius. Specific circumstances relative to subdivision or conditions land such subdivision indicate the waiver will probably carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Can you talk about this a little bit, Chris?
Yes, sir. So, the regulations require that the radius at the entrance or the radiuses in general be one hundred and fifty feet, we're proposing a radius of one hundred feet. A larger radius, uh, were employed on the site, you'd have a radius that would extend out into Winkley Pond, and there'd be no tangency at the entrance. Uh, by placing the roadway at the top of the hill and not moving it closer to the wetland area, um, is why the radius is smaller. So, if you think about where we are geometrically on an arc, if we were to push the entrance further down slope, we'd still probably technically meet our site distance, but it's not the best location. Could then get that radius to work, because we all want it at the top of slope, that radius needs to be smaller to get into our site. We're talking about very short distance, so I don't anticipate high speeds. Um, it's a small number of units and a small, sort of a small project. If we were, we had long straightaways off from the intersection, uh, it might be something that might be more concerning to me personally, it's not. And then the only other thing we look at is whether or not an emergency vehicle can navigate that corner, uh, which we've proven in our plans that that it can.
Any more questions on this waiver? Is there a motion to grant the waiver?
I'm gonna make a motion we grant the waiver for article four point eight point one.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Stain, because I voted no on the application as being.
You can abstain, that's fine.
The other one. Mr. Gi.
Jesse, aye.
All right.
Driscoll, aye. Thank you. I had, uh, requested waiver number two. The requirement in the site review regulations, article four point eight point one, to see if new streets are to be built as part of the site plan, then the design and submission regulations shall comply with the Barrington subdivision regulations. The requirement of the subdivision regulation, article twelve, table number two, grade with one hundred feet of the intersection of minus three percent. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, grant the waiver, and not be nest contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Any discussion? Okay.
So, your regulations require two percent within one hundred feet, this is a common one, uh, from us. We're proposing that the intersection grade entering Winkley Pond be at three percent. NHDOT requires four percent, so this is the difference between approaching an intersection. The regulations require two percent, we're proposing three percent, and NHDOT requires four percent. Um, the distance that we're, uh, allowed or required to have is one hundred feet, and we're proposing a three percent for approximately seventy-five feet. But this, uh, actually, no, the three percent is for the full hundred feet, and then we work into our vertical curve. What this does, the requirement is to allow for a safe platform for drivers to navigate. Um, and clearly NHDOT feels as though four percent is a safe platform to navigate. So, I would surmise that anywhere between two and four percent is perfectly safe. Uh, I also point out in my waiver request that if we were to go really any flatter than three percent, it's my opinion that we'd be creating sort of an icing issue at the top of Winkley Pond where we're, uh, proposing our entrance. Winkley Pond, as you crest that, has very little, uh, cross slope and lateral geometry. And any geometry that we do have in the cross slope onto our site, we don't want to impede by having a flatter entrance grade. Having a steeper entrance grade allows for that water to sheet off from Winkley Pond more appropriately and get into our site. If we were to pick that, that hinge up, we could actually create an icing issue accidentally at our intersection, which we want to avoid at all cost.
Any further questions on this waiver? Hearing none, is there a motion to grant this waiver?
Make a motion to grant this waiver.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Yep, abstain.
Happy L O I. Mr. Gi.
Jesse, aye.
All right.
Driscoll, aye. Do the next one. The requirement of site dis, item number, waiver number three, the requirement of site distance location at the vertex of the site triangle in article four point eight point six parentheses two of the site review regulations. Location is fourteen point five feet, which is consistent with the ASHTO standards, as well as the standard used by New Hampshire DOT. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Question number three, you want further clarification?
Speaking of Chris.
What's that?
Speak to me.
Speak to me. Well, uh, your site review regulations and your subdivision regulations conflict with one another.
Oh, no.
What's that?
I said, oh, no.
So, your site review regulations require that the vertex of the site triangles be twenty feet off from the fog line or edge of pavement. Um, and that you're looking, uh, at sitting at three and a half feet tall, looking at an object three and a half feet tall. That's what your site review regulations state. Um, your subdivision regulations discuss, uh, different heights, uh, looking at different objects. What we're asking for is a waiver to the vertex, uh, point, which is twenty feet off from the edge of pavement, when that is not standard and not congruent with the state standard, and is not congruent with the national standard. ASHTO, the Green Book, uh, requires fourteen and a half feet, which we strive for. Uh, NHDOT permits, we strive for fourteen and a half feet. Most local regulations are between eight and ten feet. Um, and most drivers use about five feet. By having the vertex be twenty feet back, all that's gonna promote us doing is cutting more trees to improve site distance in the southerly direction. I, I don't think it's necessary, I think we meet the intent of the ordinance, and we meet the intent, uh, in the pure regulation of both DOT and ASHTO.
More questions on this waiver? Or a motion to grant the waiver?
Motion, we, uh, waive the, uh, requirements of article, uh, four point eight point six parentheses two.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Stain.
Happy L O I. Mr. Gi.
Jesse, aye.
All right.
Driscoll, aye. Any more comments before we open it?
I do love the comments, so could you, could you explain, like, this is, if I was to drive up to this complex, this is what I'd see.
Yes.
The white part. Um, the door is, it's there, walk me through it, because it looks like you've got two garages, you have a door and two garages. Is that door where they walk in and then they split off?
So, each unit has its own entrance, so each unit has its own garage that you can drive into? And if you decide to jam pack your garage full of things, and you wanna park outside of that garage door, uh, you can go in what we call the man door, um, and it will go into a platform, and you can right up, you can go to your garage, or you can go right up into your typical overall townhouse unit.
So, that's what that door is?
That's right.
We're looking at.
Yep, it would be your front door.
Okay, so if I was visiting there?
Yep.
Go to that.
Yes. That's great. Yep.
All right, I hate the front.
Okay.
I'm gonna tell you why.
Feel free.
Is there's no greenery, there's, I mean, I see that little piece of whatever there, um, and just right in the middle unit. But there, there's nothing that says to me, country Barrington, it looks like you just plow and forward you go. I mean, is there some way they can soften that some way, look a little bit, um?
To be honest with you, there's gonna be no greenery there anyway, 'cause if you're gonna have all the cars parked in front and you have to plow it, it's, it's gonna be destroyed. From a plowing standpoint, it would be nightmare.
Plowing, where's that going? I mean.
So, you're gonna have to plow, so one of the things I look at is how do you manage, I mean, and you've gotta plow it, which means this direction. And there's just nowhere to put, try and put a green strip in there, it's gonna be a mess.
And the renderings don't show the curb either, show the grass going.
And where's, where is there a, Chris, I've seen some in your.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ron doesn't think so.
It's okay.
Well, if you got better with the lighting plans.
Yeah, you have to brush up on your lighting. You, you gotta bring some of that magic out that you.
So, uh, we can, and we will, we, we deal with this a lot. Uh, it's a maintenance issue versus an ocular issue or a beautification issue. Uh, we just finished this in Rochester, if we, uh, mirror the doors and flop the doors, then in front of each one of those doors, we can add about four feet of green space. And then, uh, because you've mirrored them now, uh, you have about six to eight feet of green space there. As Andy points out, uh, it's an operational problem, um, but, uh, there are means and methods to, to do it, and we can do it.
Can you put fireplaces in each unit?
You're in the onus, are you, huh?
No, Donna, we can't.
Okay.
But we can, uh, we can beautify the front of these a little bit more, yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Getting back to lighting, there was some comment about somebody, I think maybe you had said, if they thought that at the entrance, they might want more lighting. But I would be concerned about spillover onto the road, so I would not support that.
I just thought I would mention it, that's all.
That's good, worth mentioning. People have headlights on their cars, so it should be good.
I think spillover off your property is a problem with the regulations.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they'd have to back it up so much, probably be useless. Any more questions before we open to public comment? Does anybody like to speak to this application?
Brian Whedon, sixty-two Winkley Pond Road, uh, some of you guys know me. So, um, they're relying on the traffic study from one twenty-five in New Hampshire DOT for traffic study Winkley Pond Road. And he said there's a slight impact on Winkley Pond Road, and I disagree with that statement. Um, he's like doubling the impact on Winkley Pond Road. So, right now is eight single family homes on Winkley Pond Road, and they putting in seven apartments, you know, there's a minimum of, like, there's six apartments with two bedrooms, so we could add at least two drivers to them six apartments. You know, right now, like, we got single family homes on the whole Winkley Pond Road, you know, in this, you know, we have no apartments at all. And so, this thing was a field, right? So, now it's not gonna be a field. It's completely changed the dynamic of Winkley Pond Road. You know, adding the apartments is, like, unheard of, you know, especially they're maximizing the use of the land that's available to them, but they're counting the square footage of all the upland soils. So, if I buy a piece of land in Madbury, you know, should I include that in my square footage calculations? You know, even if it's detached, I can include it, you know, right? According to the regulations, how it's written. So, they're maximizing the footprint of the property that's available, and they're destroying our whole concept, Winkley Pond Road. You know, a bunch of people walk down the road, and they go from Pierce Road, you know, they come all around. You know, we, I know of at least eight people are walking on that road every day. And, you know, it's completely changing the dynamic of Winkley Pond Road, I just, like, I can't behind that at all. So, we complained a little bit about the wetlands. So, they, they readdressed the wetland study, you know, they had wetlands, soil scientists come out, and, you know, they re-tagged everything, and so, they said the confusion was the flags. Well, there's flags everywhere. I mean, if you look at the property now, like, what do these flags mean? It's never been like this before, but it's now, you got flags everywhere. So, they followed the cut line that uh, the landowner right now is mowed on, and they just stuck legs in and said, that's good, that's good, that's good. You know, I'm sure they took a soil sample, but we went to the property, like, twenty feet from where they established the wetland, so one guy took his hand and thrust it in the ground, like, eight inches. You can't do that on, on upland soils. You know, even if they got the wetland barrier, like, twenty feet from this barrier, like, you know, it filled right up with water. You could say it's standing water, but anything that contains water, to me, is wetland. You know, I'm, like, I'm not a scientist, I don't know, but, you know, it's kind of, like, a little screwy. So, I had the dean of UNH, uh, uh, Ken LaValle come up and kind of look at what they established, and I'm like, you know, do you agree with this? He said, I don't really agree with it. So, like, outside of, like, more time, I couldn't, like, I can't just, like, I can't contradict what they have already, 'cause I'm not a site. So, but everybody's looked at it, you know, don't agree with it. So, the boundaries, uh, so, very surveying come down and establish boundaries. So, I've been paying taxes for a, a number of years, and then, uh, his boundaries don't consist of what my boundaries do. So, the survey that I have establishes, like, seven eighty-five down the brook, and seventy eighty-five oh one to the other thing. So, you can make it work if you triangulate a little bit more of the calculation. So you can make it work if you triangulate a little bit more of the calculation, you know. So one survey says this and, you know, his survey says that, I'm like, who do I believe? You know, but since I didn't pay for his survey, I paid for, you know, Freddie Drew's survey, you know, I'm going to go by what he says, you know, not by what Barry says. You know, if he comes in and surveys some land later, but, you know, if we have a contradiction, you know, why should he be able to file now? And I've been paying taxes for a number of years for what's already established. You know, why is it shorter now? You know, they've taken away, like, there's 769 now and then I, I can't read what the background is. I think it's either 789 or 769. Can't read the, you know, there's a discrepancy there. But it's not, you know, why not establish what's already established? So it's 75, 78501. You know, why is there discrepancy now? And then, so when my father bought the property, long time ago, you know, the paradise owned it, whatever, so I have the original drawings that when he purchased it, they have my drawings when he subdivided it. They had the surveys backing up, you know, my claims or whatever. So it doesn't correspond to what he's, no. So like all the butters have come out and, and, well, I can't say all the butters, I myself, every butter. And I come out and just disclosed, you know, my displeasure of them guys getting approval or whatever, and you're still approving it. You know, well, I, I can't say that now. It hasn't been approved yet, but I'm saying, you know, if you guys ask for a butter's input on, on the subject or whatever, you know, it should mean something. You know, if you guys are just going to dismiss what all the butters say, you know, I, I understand that people have a right to and, you know...
Fiber property laws and regulations...
Yes, I understand that.
That the voters put in.
Yep, so, you know, that down the end of the road, you know, that they divided that or they made it both to family homes or whatever, and we had no problem with that. So we're not against, you know, expansion or whatever, but you don't maximize your footprint of rural area. You know, Barrington set up, you know, I've been here like 60 years, so we're always rural. And now all of a sudden, we're not, all these developments going in and you, you know, where do we, we draw the line? You know, what, you know, with our school system, come out with tax, we need medical facilities, you know, what about food? You know, how long does this expansion go on? You know, do we continue to expand till we can't feed anybody anymore? You know, I drove up from Seabrook today, 101 was doubling all, the whole way. So I got on 125 and happening, forget it, we never hit the speed limit once. It was like 40 all the way. You know, when, from Lee Traffic Service, it was terrible. You know, where's, you know, if we keep saying, you know, like, already there's regulations on 125 of people using 125, they don't let them develop it anymore. So no more driving, so our excuse is, well, we'll just develop the side roads, you know, Winkley Pond, Beauty Hill, but it all contributes to the same thing, you know?
We have really difficulty because the state believes in property rights, paramount thing. Very little the cities and towns can do about it.
Well, I'm, I'm voicing my opinion against it. That's my right, you know?
State legislature, you've got to talk to them.
Well, we keep, we keep approving zoning changes, right?
Turn them off, yeah. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak? Since there's not a big line, I'll give you five minutes, how's that?
Five minutes? Oh geez, I don't know, I'm a female, I don't do five minutes. My name is...
I didn't say that.
My Deborah, my name is Deborah Leahy and I am on 48 Winkley Pond Road in Barrington.
You're right across the street.
Pardon me?
You're across the street?
I'm across the street. Yes.
You're going to get a four-foot wall.
Oh, no, I'm not.
You don't?
No, I'm not getting a four-foot wall. I have an adjustment to their, having an entrance to their development across from my driveway. I am suggesting, I have it, I have it drawn on this map here, which you can't see, but having a, well, let's start at the beginning because I have my notes tonight. Been in Barrington for 44 years at that same address. Looking at the Article 6 in the conservation subdivision, I have underlined that the master plan, da-da-da-da, and future land development activities to set aside more open space for the purposes of maintaining the town's character, protecting key natural resource features and preserving wildlife habitat, then there's this much more. 6.1, one in parentheses, to maintain and protect Barrington's rural character by preserving important landscape elements, da-da-da-da, stream corridors, wetlands, floodplains, critical species habitat by setting them aside from development. 6.1, parentheses two, to preserve scenic views and to minimize views of new development from existing streets. When did the master plan change so that the rural character of Barrington is changing? It is not rural. I grew up in Dover, that's a city, we're in a town. When did the master plan change so that we are, we're not to be rural? Our, our road, in particular Winkley Pond Road, is a rural road. It's a, it's point six miles from end to end. Not much space. It is wetlands over there and...
Are you, are you finished?
No. So anyways, the, the development is going to cause a, a negative impact in our neighborhood as my observation is, and it's against why I moved to Barrington to be in a rural environment, not a, a city with houses next to each other. Is this the, the map? Okay, well, our driveway is, was there first and then they want to put their development driveway right across the street, which they can put it somewhere else. They can, okay, this, right here, they can dead end, they can make this a dead end after the two units on this side, they can stop their driveway right there. And on this end, they can come out and make an entrance where the pine trees is. I think there's four pine trees there, but...
I think that's where, that's where the cistern is going.
Well, the cistern can go somewhere else because this would eliminate the hump in the road where it is hard to see from one end to the other.
Okay.
Yes, this, this is where the, the fire...
30,000 gallon cistern, right?
Yeah, well, it's going to be, it can be far enough over here, it can slant, it doesn't have to be directly straight across. Like this is curved, this can be curved in this way so that there's nothing here and then that's the...
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So, because it's hard to back out of that, our driveway, and then there's going to be theoretically seven, 14 cars coming out. And it looks like there's a stop sign. Oh, one more point to my, my property and this development. Since 1979, we have not run out of water. We have a 25-foot dug well that was original to the property and attached to the house that we're living in that was built in 1951. We have not run out of water. I'm not quite sure how that development is going to, we're higher and they're lower, but I do not want to run out of water at this stage of the game. If my well runs dry, I want to be able to have some legal rights to what happened.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this? Anybody online?
If anybody online wishes to speak for or against this application, please raise your hand and the teams unmute yourself, we'll wait a moment. Mr. Chairman, no one online has indicated they want to speak for or against the application.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at this point.
I have a question, follow-up question.
Okay.
Based what I just heard from public comment, Chris, I think, you know, the, the road is a small road, obviously, so the only thing in the regulations that I think would apply here would be scattered and premature development. I guess I'm not sure that I see how that would apply, but I guess, look for your input on that.
I'm going to refrain from comment on that one. Every scattered and premature argument I've ever had, we've ended up in court and it was settled.
Yeah, it seems to go more on public services and things like that that don't really apply to you guys.
Yeah, scattered and premature would be in areas of town that are well outside of the functional zone, have class six roadways that haven't been improved and maybe developers looking to improve a class six roadway for a large development, well outside the service area, and this is not well outside the service area.
Yeah, the town doesn't really supply, doesn't provide, you know, water supply, that kind of stuff anyway, so...
Right.
Probably just, does not comply, does not fit specifically this application, I...
Right.
Okay.
Just so that, Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
Just, just so that she doesn't think that we didn't hear her. We've specifically moved the driveway to be in line with hers for public safety reasons. Existing driveway that's there now is barely in line, it's set. Driveway's more in line with how we're safety reasons that were stated chief and by the road agent and our designer view here. There is a purpose for it. And it's, it's safety. In terms of her well versus our well, her well is, as she noted, sounded like it was a dug well 25 feet deep. Ours will be a drilled well, draw from different sources of water. I'm not a hydrogeologist, so I'm not going to make the statement that those two don't affect one another. I'm sure there's a functional connection there somehow, but it's, it's not like we're both drawing straw or two separate straws from the same pool. They are functionally different. So I'm sure she understands that. In terms of the differences in the boundary lines, we actually followed Fred Drew's survey, I don't want to say exactly, but as precisely as possible from a 1980s subdivision by, by Mr. Drew. I will point out that the difference in the river or the stream call in the length has to do with both the fact that Fred didn't locate it the way we would locate it, simply because of his means and methods at the time are different than ours. And then secondly, Fred did not consider the fact that Winkley Pond Road is likely one of the original roads in town that was laid out as a four-rod road. And you'll note that our boundary line accounts for that four-rod layout. And you can see that on the boundary plan, we actually surveyed around the gentleman's property to ensure that we were getting the boundaries the way Fred had intended them. And you can see there's a drill hole at the end of the stone wall at the south corner of his property. That's where Fred had called his corner and the corner of the road. You'll see our, the way we show the layout of the roadway, it's internal to that. So that line would also be short, the line on the river is going to be the same, short in its distance. It's not a function of whether or not we took land from anybody, it's a function of we have more knowledge and we have different tools to measure today. Additionally, Joel was here earlier, the way Joel measures a line and the way I measure a line will be functionally different just because of the errors in the means and methods that we have in our survey technology. The board asked that we re-review the wetlands. We did. We have two scientists that are working on this project, both wetlands and soils. We did that at the board's request to ensure that we have it as accurate as we can, and we feel we've done that. That's it for me.
Questions by the board?
Question about additional use permit?
Yes.
Family?
It's permitted by conditional use, so we need to apply for a conditional use permit, yes. Yep.
So you're looking for a continuance?
Yep, that's fine with us.
To the next meeting?
We can start with that. I'm guessing the board would like CMA to review the engineering design and the stormwater design.
Are you looking for the same approach as you did on the other one? You want to get a preliminary estimate on the cost of these actions?
In this particular case, we have no additional studies to offer, so we would send it to CMA for a cost estimate and then send them the revised plans.
Yep. You're still looking at the town regulations too for them to read? I know that's an issue, but...
The site review regulations are a bit different than the basic subdivision regulations, so yes, we would understand that.
Okay. Any more comments? Anybody asking for anything else? Anybody want to make motions, send these things to CMA?
You're requesting that, right?
If it's up to me, then no.
No, we're looking for a motion here.
That was a staffer.
I get a vote.
I don't want to answer that question.
I will make that motion then.
There's a second.
Second.
Rule call?
F.I.
Capitol.
Tessie, your eye?
Just go ahead. And the motion to continue to the October 3rd meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue to the October 3rd meeting.
I'll second that. Rule call?
F.I.
Capitol.
Tessie, your eye?
All right.
Just go ahead.
Thank you for everybody's input tonight.
Let them clear out before I go to number seven. Nine o'clock. Okay. We're on item number seven, which is of the business may probably come before the board. Planner has some information.
So as you may have noticed in the staff report, that's really that. No, I think that was me breathing into it. The, there has been a lot of discussion about the road improvements that department heads are very concerned about on Winkley Pond, and they have made some suggestions. that department heads are very concerned about on Winkley Pond and they have made some suggestions in the staff report. Um, so the road agent, Chief Walker, building department and I all sat down when we did our plan review for the plans, said, is there something else that we need to look at even for future development? So they, they came up with, I guess I would say, an idea to look at some improvements. Well, I don't know if it's considered improvements, but different ways for traffic flow out of there just because we know that this project's coming before us. And then we have the other project that is potentially gonna be a larger scale project. With the farm, their potential, um, commercial in the future. So in discussions with, um, the, I guess appropriate ways to move it to the select board, so, um, we can discuss this at the next work session meeting too, so everybody is molded over it and you need to catch anybody like off guard on this. But in the comments, um, if it's possible, at least, um, the recommendation from the planning board for future transportation planning on this road, if you support what the department heads, I guess, plan had come up with, if you would support the select board looking into it to see if those were possibilities to re.
Well, glad you brought it, because actually, I questioned Chief, um, Walker's suggestion of making the north end way. To me, I can see making the north end right turn only. But it didn't seem to me, you know, if, if you're gonna go north, going up the north side, seemed to me a better solution than making a one-way push everybody to the south. So that suggestion of making the north side one-way in, I question that, I don't think that's the best plan.
Okay.
I agree that maybe no left turn is the right, is the good idea. But it seems to me that if you're going north out of Winkley, if you gotta come on Winkley, you wanna go north on one twenty-five, right-hand only, and that's angled that way, that would, I would say, right-hand only would be a good suggestion, not one.
Right, because you could, you'd still want people coming northbound to be able to take a right turn into Winkley.
I'm okay when going into Winkley Pond, taking them go down the other side where the, the south side and go in that way. Southbound, southbound. Yeah, southbound, yeah, go in southbound, but going out, I don't see, on the north, the north side of Winkley, I don't think we should be letting them go south on the north side of the exit, you know, north side of the road. Chief wanted to be one-way, and I think letting them go out that way as long as they're going north be safer than sending them out the south way.
I think what you should do this is my only suggestion.
No, I agree.
So, I don't see to me, I, I see no reason to be part of a committee. Even beyond like that, like, they have to get, they have to get a conditional use permit to move forward, but if you look at the conditions of the conditional use permit, I would never grant one.
Well, the fact that Winkley Pond Road is not a great road is not their problem in any, it's really a town problem.
You're right, the road is not their problem, but why would you make the impact of the road worse based on what's there? And, and this will all go into when I make my proposed regulations, like, things that I look at, because, and this is where I was.
We should be discussing the case file, because that.
I'm not discussing the case file, I'm discussing our regulation and the, and the way our regulation is written. The only thing I'm discussing is that I was, that it relates to it is my sparring with Chris on it. And it is, the way the wording is written is, if you look at the wording of our regulation, it doesn't reference contiguous upland, which allows this mass influx of density into a parcel of land that if you looked at from a build-out standpoint, you would never get that density anywhere. But because of the way our regulation is written, it allows this to happen, which is why you end up with neighbors in here or people, let's, let's just say, any abutting landowner that would never have expected something like that to ever, it'd be like, oh, it's never gonna happen because you've got all this wetland in between. Um, and it could be any parcel across town because there's all kinds of wetland. But because it doesn't reference contiguous upland, you get this mass density push.
Every square foot of place they can find it.
Right.
Over a river and through the woods. The day one, I said.
So that's where, like, I propose we change that.
Um, it won't affect this one, but.
It, no, but you can prevent it from like, i- if you look at it, like, this is what's happening now is anything that's left, that's a parcel that's large, even if it's got a, pardon the expression, but a crap ton of wetland on it. Doesn't matter as long as there's some upland somewhere that they can steal into it to create density.
Nothing with the yield plan crazy.
One of our recommendations is improve our language around the yield. I have an issue, I have an issue with that.
Even if, if you read.
If you want the, I'm not gonna use any particular case, but suppose there was somebody to one and they have to bridge this area, well, we should ask them to see, contract with CMA, what's the cost of that bridge? Does it make any sense?
That's a, that's a whole hot toboggan anyway, because you look at, and I'll use for example, um, oh god, what the heck's the name of the road, uh, the one off, uh, Smoke Street there where now, uh, the Castle Rock, thank you, Castle Rock Road, where the proposal on that was it was gonna cost a million plus dollars to upgrade that road and I can tell you it was nowhere, it didn't even break six figures to do it. So, I mean, they're, like, what CMA or any engineering firm might propose might not actually be reality either.
Well, but we'll let, we'll let the applicant provide their own cost analysis so that they have a check by CMA.
Yeah, he, he can bring his own engineer in if he.
Have them do the cost analysis, so then make the engineer provide a cost analysis, the applicant engineer.
But the notion that we just get it and say, oh, okay.
I just look at it as when you look at this, what, what I see happening is we have a, a regulation that's designed toward keeping the rural character of town and everybody coming in and using our regulation against us to get what they want because you have a large landmass that they can buy at a reasonably affordable price and come in here and.
Go back to two thousand seven, that layout for the town center and the town center, that's what people presumably wanted back then.
Or remember.
All these little teeny roads.
It all goes back to the state push for affordable housing. This is all under the affordable housing, workforce housing model that allows this kind of state wants. So to say that, you know, Barrington doesn't want it is contrary to what the state's trying to push.
But this, that doesn't, so the state doesn't have that. They, they have authority, but they do not have authority over our regulation. That is our job.
I think they have specific regulations, R S A's are trying to push.
Well, I was gonna say that we have the regulations for workforce housing.
That they can't do.
It's just that we can't keep our workforce housing. If we have housing that's advantageous to old age and workforce housing cannot be more restrictive than.
Look, just 'cause from Bob over is the young side of the table here, I don't know what I mean.
I resent it, the line is wrong here.
Maybe we should discuss this in that work session.
Yeah, I mean, because when I look at it, like, it's.
And we're going through zoning regulations, so this is an opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I, I question the whole, you know, we allow density for the downtown center, you know, mixed use and all that kind of stuff. I don't think it's ever gonna happen. I mean, look, look at the, look at the projects we have, they put a garage down, they put a garage down below that, you know, is it gonna be commercial? No, but it's a way to push density downtown.
When it'll, when it'll happen is when it, when you can't go any, when they can't go any, any crazier with the lots that are there, that's when you will see the density of downtown. Nobody ever thought they'd build townhomes here. Look where we're, and I sat here, I can tell you, I sat here in two thousand fifteen arguing with Marcia about that. She's like, oh, it'll never happen, Andy, it'll never happen. Yahtzee, it's here.
Yeah, but the mixed use, you know, the downtown. Unless Amazon goes out of business, you know, bricks and mortar doesn't happen. You know, you're not gonna push density downtown, have merchants downtown.
What it, what it does is if you look at is the service side that uses that mixed use, such your coffee shops, your hair salons, your art studios, your things of that nature.
And I will go back to Eleni and say, when I drive down Beauty Hill, why am I gonna go left toward the center instead of down toward, uh, you know, the lead traffic circle where I now get my head done, I buy my groceries, I go to the gym there, um, I have a liquor store there.
You know, it's all there.
So we need a liquor store.
Why am I going downtown? There's no way I'm going downtown, there's no way.
But there's a lot of people who are all about that small downtown feel.
They all want it, but it's not, most towns don't have it and there's reason, it's not practical.
It's not feasible.
It's not feasible, I mean, the biggest, the biggest way we have to make that happen is TurboCam, and TurboCam is not enough that it can happen. If you got, if you got a bedroom community, you know, you know, people in the bedroom community, they don't drive downtown for lunch, they eat lunch in their houses.
Oh, I, I, see, there's where I, like.
People go to the restaurants downtown, the ones that work at TurboCam.
And you said yourself last meeting, TurboCam is what keeps Milos in business.
It is.
Well, Turbo, I wouldn't say TurboCam keeps Milos in business, but TurboCam pedals a lot of business to
But during the week.
Milos, George, Kayla's.
TurboCam, Kayla, like, all of them go that way, so.
This is, hold this for the work session and make a motion to.
Are you doing that on October third when I won't be here?
Motion was made and seconded.
Seconded, uh, aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.
I told you to motion, then I got.
All right, Chief for recorder, who made the motion?
Aye.
Dunn did. Joyce seconded.
Sure, okay.